Ready folks?
Okay, well, we're a minute early, but we'll call the Monday, January ninth, two thousand twenty-three, Select Board Meeting to Order. Who's the Budget Leadings?
Budget Leadings.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Actually, our clock appears a minute slower.
I think so too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, let me turn this off here. Okay, approval of agenda. Do we have any additions?
Well, we have Andrew Stevenson, who is our new Deputy Chief for EMS is here, so I'd like to add him on the public forum. Maybe he can just introduce himself, tell you a little bit about what he's doing.
Sounds good. Anything else?
No committee reports?
No, no, there's a RSU meeting tonight.
I make a motion when we approve the agenda.
Motion, motion by Jason, seconded by Adama. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, public forum.
Yeah, Andrew. Why don't you come up and take a seat?
Step on up, turn the mic on.
Tell them a little bit about you and what you're doing.
Well, it's just, we want to make sure because we're recording. We're recording, so. There we go.
Hi, my name's Andrew Stevenson. I'm the new Deputy Chief of EMS here in the town. I accepted the job last Thursday. Come with about twenty-three, twenty-four years of experience. I work full-time. I've been a lieutenant over there. I've worked for D M and numerous other agencies. I've been with Rundle for, I think, about twelve or thirteen years at this point in time. So my goals are to, and I've already started on some of them, is quality assurance and improvement through our run reporting program. There's a standard that we need to maintain with our ambulance service. Classes with neighbor and communities establish a relationship there. We already do a lot of fire training with them, but I'd also like to incorporate some EMS training with them. And during my interview, we also talked about possibly looking into community paramedics as well.
Why don't you explain a little bit about what community paramedics?
So community paramedicism is something that we go to on a regular basis and maybe just go to them daily or have some sort of system that we establish and see if they need any, need a prescription fill. Try to go to Hannaford and get that taken care of. See if they need any other outside resources, P T O T to come in. Or even if we're there checking on them, we might have to transport them to the hospital. It's just to decrease the, the strain on them constantly having to go to the hospital. Like, we've seen it numerous times throughout the years. We go to people on a regular basis. And if we can just fill their needs and not have to transport them, we prefer to do that.
When you choose to, individuals that you provide that service?
It, it, they would have to be some qual, some sort of qualifier. Now, I don't know if we would see them two or three times in a week. That sets up the parameters that now we're going to reach out, do an outreach to them and start the process there. It may be something that whatever we decide for the parameters, it could be four times a month. I don't know. The Community Paramedicine Program started as a pilot program throughout the state about, I think about six or seven years ago. And it kind of took the place of visiting nurses due to the lack of nurses and the availability of the EMS systems. So that's what we're trying to do and also communicate with our taxpayers a little bit more as well. So if we can increase that outreach, I think it's better for the department.
My good idea to add is to leave one hour, the next one will happen.
Well, I, I, I think it's a work in progress. I mean, we, we talked about it during his interview. And it, just so you guys know, Andrew's worked for the department, as he said, I, I think he's being modest. It was fourteen years he's been here. He's worked as a paramedic for us, as a per diem paramedic. And with the increase of our staffing now to full-time, it's really predicated some more observant over the medical, emergency medical services that we provide. So Andrew's going to be able to provide that oversight with his experience and his knowledge and his ability to train folks will be an asset to the department. So we had an in-house folks that were in-house that applied for the position. We had three interviews. And Andrew was the one that was selected through the three in-house folks to, to work with us. So we're excited about having him on board. I think he's going to be a great asset to the EMS side of our, side of things for us. And one of the things that we talked about was this, this community outreach, which I thought was pretty, pretty fascinating in a way to provide a service to those homebound citizens we may have that, for lack of a better term, end up being frequent flyers for, for the ambulance service. And we may be able to help them, so they're not frequent flyers. And it would be something that would be beneficial to the community. So we're excited about it. I'm happy that Andrew's on board.
Does it work with Wendy at all? With Wendy, with the people it works with?
No, not necessarily.
But if we had someone that she thought needed something else?
Well, if we had that frequent, yeah.
That, that's what.
You're right about that.
So you, you have a neighbor and community, Kenny Bonkport, they, they used to have a nurse that would go around and do this type of stuff. So with our, with our increased staffing, we're, we're going to try to look into this and see if it's going to be worth our while to be able to do this. And it may start off with just a few patients a year. But as we know, all know with the growing population, more people want to stay home for a longer period of time. That, that's been the trend through the last couple of years, and I don't see it stopping anytime soon.
Yeah. Particularly for what it costs to, for, for patient care.
Yeah.
Just unbelievable.
Like, just, people want to stay in their homes as long as possible. So, you know, if, if someone runs out of prescriptions, you know, if we were able to outreach with them, go and take care of, go into the pharmacy and getting them. Trying to work out something with the pharmacies or make sure that they get delivered to them. Maybe even go in there and just take them blood pressures. Someone to talk to. You know, it could be an hour visit. It could be two hours. So.
Yeah, there's, you know, something like that certainly goes a long ways.
Thanks, thanks for swinging in.
Yeah, we got some making up to do.
Thanks, Andy.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, excited for the agenda.
Those are the quick ones? Oh, yeah.
Hold in the parking lot, you guys are leasuries.
All right, we have a motion by Melma. Second by Tom. All over the paper. And one of these guys by Jason. No committee and board reports? Managers reports, maybe they can find for the minimum of a few.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, as I provided to you in your executive summary, starting to think about the days or days that perhaps would be appropriate for us to begin the process. I, I'm trying to think about keeping them on those Wednesdays or Thursdays and have them on the night or the weeks that you meet. So in, instead of having you come out numerous times on a week, say, we week, if we meet with selectmen on Monday, we'd have it either Wednesday or Thursday of that same week. And then if we have to do multiple weeks in, in a row, then obviously we'll do that. But trying to gauge what, what's better, Wednesdays or Thursdays for you? And that would be my leading factor. Then I'll send the information out to the Budget Board. I, I spoke to the Chairman of the Budget Board, who indicated to me that either day would work for him. He would prefer, I believe it was Wednesdays as opposed to Thursdays. But that was his preference, but he'd meet any, any night. So whatever works for you guys as well, then we'll start putting the notices out and start meeting. No, I, I really see the TIF capture stuff as being a little bit more lengthy or not lengthy, little, little quicker in terms of what we can do. I, you know, not to, not to speak out of term, but I think that the, the, the state statute on what projects that we can use the funding for is pretty limited. I mean, we can look at it and discuss and figure out which ones we fall within there. That may be beyond what we presently have. So I see the, the, the committee maybe not being, meeting as long as perhaps maybe the Budget Board would be meeting through this process over the next several months, so. Yeah, I, yeah. Correct. Right. Right, so, yeah, and I, I see the, the TIF Committee. I mean, I've put together a narrative that we'll share on the first night as to the history of the, the TIF that we have now, how we, how we got there, how much money we've already secured in our account for the town account funding. Our history as to what we did in terms of the sewer review and what other aspects that have already been approved for use that you folks have, have said we may want to expand that. So we're now looking at that expansion process within the, within the confines of the statute. So I don't see that, you know, once we give them the history and give, provide them the information. I don't see it being that long. I, I think the biggest here, the biggest hurdle we're going to have there will be to not only go back to the townspeople to seek approval and explanations to that approval, but then to send that on to the Department of Economic Community Development and providing, getting their blessings for the changes within, within what we're trying to do. So those will be the two hurdles that we'll have. So they'll, they'll take, they'll take a while, because I wouldn't anticipate us acting upon that unless you think there's a real need to do it sooner than to hold it off and to do it during an annual town meeting would be my preference, but I may be a little slower than the rest of you. Not sure. I, I agree. I think that's going to be the key, and that may be, the first meeting may take longer as a result of that. So what is it, Wednesdays, you think are the best for the Budget Board?
Either day works.
Yep. Wednesday's better for you? Okay.
I think so, right.
Okay.
And then we touch base a little bit on the TIF.
Uh, no, but if you, if it's Wednesdays, then I will, I will schedule accordingly. So we may have a Wednesday evening that we're meeting the Budget Board and the, and you folks, Select Board. And then the following Wednesday, we may meet with the, with the TIF capture.
What are you thinking of starting, Keith?
What's that?
What do you think on starting? What would be the first one?
You know, I hadn't really, I hadn't looked at it. I'm still working on certain aspects of, of the budget. I'm trying to link in all the actual costs that we know of. I'm going to make a proposal based on, on what I'm seeing. You know, ours is really predicated on salaries and benefits. That's forty-five percent of our budget. So I'm working on coming up with the, with the numbers accordingly there, so. And then we also need to look at, I think, in quite, quite a bit of detail this time, is what we're doing with our capital projects. I know we've, we've bounced that along. I think there's been frustration perhaps with me in the past, reference to how we've, we've tried to utilize the funding. It seems like we're utilizing the funding and there's no gain to the capital cost, capital budget within that. A primary would be any public works of fire. Before we know it, we got a hundred thousand dollars there and we've spent it. And we, we're not getting an ability to, to accumulate any of our funding. So we may want to take a harder look at that this time. Yeah, the reason I, the reason I bring this up is that, as you know, with the departure of the tax collector and the town clerk, we, we ended up hiring new individuals to take over those positions. In their interim, because they weren't properly trained, I went ahead and for an hour period between twelve and one, we closed the office because didn't really have anybody that was absolutely trained to provide any services at that time. And so a couple of weeks ago, I indicated to the staff that I was looking at going back to the half-hour intervals. And there was some, there was some thought process that the staff provided, that they really liked the, the hour off. And the reason being is that what happens right now is that all staff are in the, in the office. And at noon time, the door locks electronically and it opens again at one o'clock electronically. But if somebody's in the, in the lobby, they're not asked to leave. They stay. And we provide services to them. So this last week and, you know, during the holiday season, we had people in there that got in before noon time. They were there till twelve fifteen, twelve twenty. And then our staff went ahead and took their, their period. Now, some of them may have already taken lunch or going to lunch, but somebody stayed. So we provided the services that way with the door locked. What staff sees now is that there's a lot of overflow for that. We, we have a redundancy of folks coming in at noon time and making it in the door before the door is locked. And we have no objections to that. So they thought that, you know, that would be some way to provide a thought process that it, it seemed to be a benefit to have all staff there. Because sometimes there's questions particularly on, on new registrations, what they can do if they have the proper paperwork and so on and so forth. It seems to be more automobile, motor vehicle registrations. And now that we are a full-service community, we get a lot of people that like to continue to do all their work here. So that was, that was part of it. The other thing that they also alluded to is that it becomes a little bit more convenient when, with the hour delay or the hour closure, that when we have folks that are sick or out for other reasons, either sick or doctor's appointments or something like that, it provides that opportunity that, that person who may be there to have that time away. And then they come back, so they may be by themselves. And this gives them an opportunity to, to take it, take their leisure. Because oftentimes, they may not be able to take their lunch if we had the office open and there was, and we're short-staffed. What comes to mind for me would be during tax collection time. We have a lot of folks that will be coming through the door at tax collection. And as a result of that, nobody leaves their desk. They're taking their half-hour lunch and they're providing services even when the door is open. So that was the other thing that they thought, talked about. So they asked if I could provide some thought process to you folks as to whether or not you felt that the, keeping the office closed for one hour could be continued. And so I said I would. I'd bring it up.
I only concern, Keith, would be, we're closed on Fridays.
Yep.
Is, I mean, how often do you think people are using their lunch break to come to the town hall to get stuff done?
You know, that's interesting. We, I think, I think of all the times that we've done it, I think I've had one, one complaint that I've received so far that folks, by email, gentlemen contacted me and said, hey, look, I came by and the place was closed. I wish you'd put it on the website so I knew I could plan accordingly. I've had people that I've observed that will come in at noon time, see that the office is closed, they'll get in the car, they'll leave, they'll come back at one because that's what the sign says. But they do not come in saying, geez, I was here, why the heck you closed? We're not getting the complaints from the public at this point. I haven't received the complaints because I believe that the, the notice says that we're temporarily doing this at this point because of staffing issues, so. Yep. Yeah. Okay.
Certainly, although it gets down to the end of the question, certainly there's some complaints on Facebook.
Oh, okay. We open at seven. Yep, close at five thirty. Yep. Okay. Well, I may be able to, I may be able to work out something with the staff that they rotate. That maybe two take, take a break at the same time and then one has to, you know, we'll, we'll work it out.
Maybe two, if, maybe like if you referenced if someone was sick, like maybe if one of the two front girls was sick. You know, maybe then, you know, if there's only one girl in the office, then maybe it would benefit her.
Yeah.
She needs an hour to decompress and like.
Yeah.
On an everyday basis, I don't know.
Ten-hour workday, half an hour.
Yeah. So, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll look into it. We'll figure, figure out what we're going to do. But yeah, I, I think there was no, you know, we have two new ladies in the office, but all the old staff knew that this was a temporary measure that we were going to go back to the, to the half-hour in the rotating schedule. So we'll, we'll work it out. We'll make it work. And if I, if, if we find that it's not working or that we're having issues with it, I'll let you know that too. I know that last Thursday, we, there weren't many in the office. I think Sherry was the only one in the office in the main lobby. And we had, I had left early and the staff told me that there was an abundance of people waiting to register. And then we had, we had two individuals who came in. I don't know if you, have you, are you aware of this, but there's a bunch of citizens that are going around videotaping public buildings and, and, you know, asking specific questions and things, just trying to, to receive a negative response from the, the government employees that they're meeting. So that happened on, with Sherry, and I have to give the tax assessor kudos because not only did she, she answered all their questions, they came down the lobby and they talked to her and they were filming. But then they went outside and filmed the building, looked in the windows, things like that. What they're, what they're trying to accomplish is a negative response from public employees that tells them to, to get away from the facilities and things like that. So it's happening a lot throughout the country and it's starting to happen here in Maine. Yeah. Yeah, a lot of, yeah, a lot of these things that happen are, my preference is, I'm, I'm sorry I wasn't here because I certainly would have given them all a tour and, and tell them how, you know, open and transparent, we're trying to be here and walk them through. But we had limited staff, so they couldn't come in and, and into the secured parts of the building, so. But anyways, it's happening. And so Sherry had her hands full on Thursday.
Well, the other thing too, we're in a situation where the whole day is set up, and our question that we can answer. And we have a good, good training, but that's, okay, we need to make sure that people are trained on a specific diet.
Sure. Yep.
Or that. More different than somebody coming in and it was closed, then, you know, they come back in half an hour or whatever.
Yep.
All right, next item is approval for table, table will watch.
Just before we, before we move on to a German here at some point, just to make sure that you, you got your bank account information from the Deputy Treasurer again. Again, that'll be a monthly amount that she'll provide to you. I also, the information I gave you on the MMA is just general information for you to have in case you're, you're wondering certain things, as well as on the back of it, we have offices that can be contacted if then there's a need for it. So that's on the back page of the, of the document as well. This came with our, our new annual MMA dues. So they sent this along with the dues, which are going to be close to six thousand dollars this year coming up. So, which is a little bit more than the past, but still, I think we get a big bang for a buck through MMA. Yep. Sure, I'll put it on for now for each meeting. Waiting to hear back from the property owner. I provided, because like, she indicated to me that she wanted to provide me dates. I did not hear from her in terms of dates and times, so I provided her dates and times that would be acceptable to the town in order to visit the property. So waiting to hear back. I've given her to the end of the week to provide some sort of content. um waiting to hear back. I've given her to the end of the week to provide some sort of contact back to us on dates that would meet. And then once she gives me the dates, then I can link in um our our folks that we need to have there and then we'll tell her when we're coming and what time and what day. But um if as long as she gives me a parameter, then I can schedule those folks to be there. So that's the issue right now that we're dealing with. The only other issue I had down there, and it came to me today, and just so you you have an idea, it was on feral cats. Uh I guess there was, uh some of the neighbors had been feeding some feral cats and then they wanted to um they were getting, they thought that these cats were going to um freeze to death during the wintertime, so they called the animal control officer who um who picked them up. And what we generally do with feral cats is, and we don't do what we used to do in the past. We do what is humane now, and that is that we take them to the animal animal welfare society and we have them neutered or spayed. And then they're returned to where they were as feral cats. And the the process here is to try to eliminate um the feral cat population by doing these um these uh neutered and spayed routines for these cats. So what happened in this case is that uh not only did the cat get neutered and spayed, it returned to the person's house that thought that it was taken away. And now they were complaining to the animal control that it was back and um they decided to try to take it in as a pet. And uh found out that once they got it into the house, it it raised holy old heck with the inside of their building, so they opened the door and let it out again. So um that was what happened on Proctor Road too, Ken. So just so you know. Right. Yeah, that that's basically what we we've said to them is that we'll do the administrative inspection warrant if we don't get any results here. So um trying to be as well, just trying to be compassionate as much as I can be. Um but, you know, at some point, that sort of goes away.